Meeting please come to order. Meeting of November 3, 2021. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Dibella.
Here.
Haddell.
Here.
Avedision. Buell. Bush. Curry. Commissioner Curry is on the WebEx. Drake.
Here.
Gardo.
Here.
Healy. Hoffman.
Here.
Hoheb. Holloway. Was that Commissioner Hoheb on the phone?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Holloway. Yono. Cambly.
Here.
Lechance. LeBeau.
Here.
Lester. Lewis. Magnin.
Here.
Maniscalco. Mandike. Marata. Payne.
Here.
Patel. Petosky. Salemme.
Here.
Sweetsie.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Torres. Vassino. Wolf.
Here.
Carrier. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
This is public, which stands nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice.
And justice.
Item four, approval of the meeting minutes of October 4, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those are favorably signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Item five, public comments relative to agenda items.
Hi, Judy Allen, West Hartford. I submitted written comments, so I just want to highlight a few things. The presentation tonight covers the water rates and ad valorem, but doesn't mention the customer sewer service fee, something that is proposed to increase from $7 to $9 and has an impact on the ad valorem. The public has a right to know about this increase. At a recent meeting of the Board of Finance, this charge was discussed with an explanation that the rate is set based on the Raftella study, which has not been made public. Mr. Jellison explained that it will not be made public until it has been presented to the Bureau of Public Works. According to the website, Public Works is not scheduled to meet before the public hearing on November 15. Are we to assume that the study will not be available before the public hearing? And how can the public comment on a charge without knowing how it is set? Finally, now it is known that the discounts on water have had no effect on the amount of water Niagara buys. I would like the MDC to reconsider the continuation of these discounts. Discounts impacts not only the water rate, but has significant impact on the clean water project charge. At a recent meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee, there was a suggestion that the discount continue since it is also meant to attract more high-volume water users. There was a suggestion that the MDC target large bottlers across the country to directly contact them and entice them to MDC towns with discounts on water. This is highly inappropriate for the MDC. It is your member towns who decide what kind of economic development they want to attract to their towns and wrong for the MDC to push for any one town to welcome a large-volume water user. It's wrong for the MDC to set its rates based on what might be rather than what is. It is fairly obvious that, again, only Niagara will benefit and the MDC will continue to lose significant revenue. Please repeal the discounts. Thank you.
Further? Further comment? A report from the district chairman. Passed right now. A report from the chief executive officer. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I did, John Myrtle, did issue the Raftella study today to all commissioners and I believe to Mr. Silverstone as well. And we will be talking about the $2 increase in the budget agenda item, number 12. I know Commissioner Vassino is not here, could not be here tonight, but I just want everyone to know that I have had a chance to speak with him regarding the agenda item, the MS4 issue with the city of Hartford. We also are going to bring to BPW on the 22th of November to talk about MS4, a new sewer ordinance as it relates to our NEPTES permit and our integrated plan approval. We're hopeful to get the integrated plan approved very shortly. I've had meetings, the chairman and I and staff have gone up to the Granby, Blue Hills area. That's the next phase of work, separation work that we need to do. They've had tremendous street flooding and sewer backups in those areas over the years, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. It's part of a solution, it's not the solution. There also needs to be some improved drainage in the area by either the town or the DOT. But we are committed, and that is part of the first phase, if the integrated plan gets approved, within the first eight years, we'll be doing a lot of separation work up in those areas. I mentioned to the, to this board numerous times, I've mentioned to our town leaders at our town budget workshops, it's extremely important, if and when we get the integrated plan approved, that we have all eight towns support the integrated plan during referendum. The board will decide when we go for a referendum, but the really important part of the referendum support from our towns is that although most of the work will be done in the northern part of Hartford, that the concern that the town should have is without the integrated plan funding mechanism, meaning in a referendum approval, the MDC will be forced and has been since 2020 doing consent decree-related work. So lining work, sewer improvements as it relates to EPA, not to state of Connecticut. And we're paying for it with Avalor money. So there is an incentive to get stormwater out of the system, whether it's in Hartford, whether it's in West Hartford, Newington, or Weathersfield. Because if we don't do that in this next phase, we're going to be forced under the consent decree, under the CIMOM provision, to actually do that work but not charge the clean water surcharge. It'll be, have to be charged towards Avalor. 2020, the MDC budgeted $21 million for CIMOM work. This year, 2022, we're proposing $23 million. So you can see, lack of doing nothing, it's going to get, has to get paid for because we're required and mandated by EPA to do it. So we're hopeful that all of our towns will support the work that needs to be done in the northern part of the city of Hartford. Also, we did receive bids, as you remember, and we, again, we'll give a full update to BPW. We did receive bids for Contract 3, which is the pump station related to the tunnel that we're building from the South Meadows down to West Hartford. That bid came in almost exactly as the estimate from the engineers, $117 million. We have notified DEEP that, our expectation under the grant program, that we'll receive $64 million in grant. We need that money, that grant money to obviously do the remaining projects, like the separation work on Franklin Avenue, which will dump into the new tunnel as well. And that'll help eliminate the overflows to the Weathersfield Cove. So we're not going to recommend to the board to sign that contract until DEEP gives us knowledge that the funding, the $64 million in grant, is available. The other thing I've mentioned before, and unfortunately, the state of Connecticut, I sent an email out a couple of months ago regarding the Right to Know and the changing of the opinion of EPA staff and DEEP staff on how we are to report our basement backups. And so DEEP has also indicated that we will now be responsible to notify the Right to Know website of all backups and basements. They initially told us that we would just report those and that those would be done, you know, as the way we've been doing them in the past. But now they're expecting us to actually put them on the Right to Know website at DEEP. The... I do have, I do have Rita Kelly here. Rita, if you could step up. She is our affirmative action officer. She's been with us for a number of years now, at least 10 years. We have submitted our CHRO affirmative action plan. We're going to be presenting this at PPI next week, but because the meetings before the PPI meeting, I felt this was the appropriate time to have Rita just give us a little heads up on the plan and the process. So go ahead, Rita.
Okay. It's good to see everybody. Good evening. The actual meeting for the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities is next Wednesday. And at the Wednesday meeting, the commission will vote on the approval of the MDC's affirmative action program. They have provided some very positive feedback about our program. This is the 10th annual approval that we've gotten, so we should all be very proud of that. Some of the positive feedback that I've gotten from CHRO is that they're very pleased in terms of the continuing diversification of our management team. Over the last year and a half to two years, our management team has become more diverse. Some of the examples have been, there has been the hire of a Hispanic female as the HR manager, a black female as manager of customer service, Asian female as controller, and a white female is currently acting director of HR. So the commission sees that work and does feel that it shows a good faith on the part of the MDC towards achieving its affirmative action goals. Now, one of the areas that we're going to focus on, and we're talking to CHRO about this right now, is the expanding recruitment for positions within our skilled craft category, which would include positions such as utility maintainer. In those positions, we really have noticed that we're not getting as many applicants of color as, you know, we would like. And some of the requirements of the position are requirements such as CDLs or two-years' experience in water and sewer. So we really want to expand our outreach to certain groups we feel are underutilized. And one of the initiatives that we're going to start doing is working with our contractors to help us identify people who would be qualified for these positions. The other matter I wanted to talk to as well, to you as well about, is, as you all know, we have a whistleblower policy, and we also have an affirmative action EO policy that contains processes for filing complaints. And when an employee has a concern, they could take either path. What I have been doing over the last couple of months is doing workshops on the affirmative action complaint process and also the whistleblower complaint process. It is our goal that every single employee at the MDC is trained and receives information about these avenues that they have, if they have concerns. Currently, I've conducted 20 sessions for a total of 289 people. There are 121 people left to go. These are in-person sessions, and the feedback I've gotten from the people who've attended them has been quite positive. And within these sessions, I explain to people the paths that they have for filing concerns. One is the affirmative action path, which deals with discrimination complaints. And the other path would be the whistleblower complaint process, which would deal with practices such as discrimination as well or also unethical practices such as mismanagement. However, in the whistleblower program, there is one difference in terms of a complaint process that should be noted, and that is, is that a lot of times employees will not come forward if they have to provide their name. And the whistleblower program does provide a mechanism so that people don't have to provide their name. But, you know, at the end of the day, what these workshops, their intent was is to allow employees to know that they do have rights to file complaints and to get resolution of concerns that they might have regarding their employment. And as Scott said, next week, on Wednesday, I will give a more fleshed-out presentation on the whistleblower program and the affirmative action program. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. And then, the, I think we are going to discuss the, as Ms. Judy mentioned, that the, we are going to be talking in detail about the Raftella study at the BPW meeting on the 22nd. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer back to you.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Alan.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address something that Rita mentioned, and it goes to Scott. Rita mentions, if that's for me, I'm not here.
$10,000.
Rita mentions a concern, rightly so, a concern for the number of specific minorities or underserved folks. And I wonder, Scott, what kind of responses, if any, we've had over the years for those folks who have been part of a summer internship program that we have run for, I'm going to say, could be 10 years. I don't, I don't know exactly.
Last couple of years we haven't because of...
Right. But up until that point, we had been. And I came in contact with several of those folks, and they seem to be on a path that would lead them to this corporation, at least to make an application. So I wonder, Scott, if you could just briefly address that, success or failure or whatever.
Yeah, and so we have two programs. One of the programs is a college intern program that we did not have last year. We are budgeting for it this year. Same thing with the Learn to Earn program, which is more of a high school program. And under the Learn to Earn, we ask the school superintendent system to recommend kids to us that are interested in working through the Learn to Earn program, which is really to teach them how to operate a water or wastewater treatment facility. We actually, with the help of, with HR and Commissioner Taylor, we created a program that was in Portland, Connecticut, that kind of went defunct. And we created a program in Bloomfield High School system where it's, there's actually a curriculum to get your small water system license as part of the, as part of the curriculum. So we have hired, and I don't know if it's two or three interns, five? So five interns from the college intern program. And we haven't had a lot of success. We've had a lot of interest. We've had a lot of young people interested in the program as they're in it. And, but we haven't had a lot of interest in going to get their licenses so that they can be certified as an operator. And that's, you know, as I talked with Rita and Jamie, our goal, and we've said this every year, every time we meet with CHRO, is we need to be more aggressive in going out and recruiting people from, from the schools, high schools and/or from contractors or, you know, other businesses that meet our minimum qualifications. So we're, we need to be a little more aggressive on the, on the water treatment operator side. But in the college side, we've actually been, we've been very successful. Chris, actually, his executive assistant was from our college program.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, about the Raftella study. So just a quick question about that. So I know it's headed to Public Works, and that's to approve the sewer user service charge? Is that what it is?
No. No. The, so we recommended in the, in the budget this year to increase the sewer customer service charge from $7 to $9. That was part of the budget, that was part of the presentation. And we believe that the, with all of the programs that we're initiating this year, we talked about a $2 million, a $2 million backwater valve program. We talked about MS4. We talked about all these programs that are directly related to private property. We are strongly, we feel strongly that $2 is justifiable rather than increasing the cost to the towns. However, I did ask Raftella, and they did provide a document this past week, to not only, really wasn't about this year's budget, it was about the future. And what should the, what should the customer service charge be over the next five years? And they have given us recommendations that presently, we should be charging about $18 million to the private property side. And we're not. So a dollar is a million dollars, so we're charging seven. And we felt $2 was a fair increase. The goal for BPW and then Board of Finance and then the full board would be, what does, what do those committees and board want to do? Do we want to increase it over a five-year period, a 10-year period, a one-year period? But really looking, really looking into 2023 and the next five years.
That started with my question. So, you know, why is it at, you know, BPW? So, but it's basically because of the new information that we got, I just got today on this. And that it'll be back to the Board of Finance, it's also coming back to the Board of Finance.
Correct.
We're going to see it then.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Just ask a couple minutes further on that, Scott. What's the average bill? Because that's a 30% increase. $2.10 would be 30% of $7. What's, what would the average bill be for one of those private businesses that's going to have that 30% increase?
Well, so we have...
$10,000, they're going to, you know, they're getting a $3,000 increase.
No, no. Everyone gets charged, on the customer service side, on the water side, everyone gets, with a 5/8 meter, gets charged $14.98. And so everyone will get charged to $7. We have, so it's $7, nine. Now, we have proposed, and last year, and we need to, we need a lot more data on this so that we can actually properly charge. But for example, you might have, and I'll pick the hospital. You might have the hospital that has five or six different sewer laterals that are served from five or six different streets within the city of Hartford. Our goal is to properly charge each one of those laterals $7, or now proposed $9.
Okay, I, okay.
Sorry.
I understand. Thank you.
Further questions of the, of the chief executive officer's report?
Okay. Item number eight, report from the district council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, a few things I'd like to go over. The first is, we've heard no word back from Department of Energy and Environmental Protection on our Hartford landfill claim and the possibilities of negotiating a resolution or settlement. We had hoped to hear back by October 1. We did not. I sent an email to the Assistant AG handling the matter asking for an update. I've heard no response yet, but, and that was sent out on October 6. So we're waiting patiently. If I, as I receive anything, I'll certainly let the commission know or the board know what their response is. On the Colebrook Dam issue, we prepared through John Larson's office an amendment that can be attached to any federal legislation designed to deauthorize the project. And as I've indicated at the last meeting, there have been several similar situations throughout the country, two of which have been in Connecticut, where there's been a deauthorization of an Army Corps of Engineers project because the life of the project is over or because the benefit that was once enjoyed by one or both of the parties is no longer, is no longer there, which is our situation. It's been turned over to the Army Corps of Engineers Legislative Drafting Agency. While it's called an Army Corps drafting agency, it's independent of the Army Corps of Engineers. We expect their work to be done, their review and approval to be issued within a few weeks. And once that's done, we'll then reach out to our, again, to our lobbyists and find some legislation to tack that on. The, we're also working on two bylaw changes, one of which was, had a public hearing dealing with communications between commissioners and staff. We've had several revisions since that, that meeting. There were some, some questions raised and concerns raised by board members about being able to communicate with staff. And we understood that and took that to heart and have gone on to revise it and circulate it amongst our staff, including Scott and Chairman Dibella. And we're waiting to hear back on that. We also have the enhancement, I'll say, for lack of a better term, of our ethics code, which has been circulated amongst staff. I've also circulated that to Rita Kelly for her to look at that and see what, if any, provisions could be or should be added to those, the code relating to whistleblowers and affirmative action. So there may be nothing to add, but we want to give, I want to give her the opportunity to review it and get back to me. So bottom line is, on both those, what I'd like to happen or to see happen is, when we finish up the municipal, the Code of Ethics, to have our public hearing on that, bring it back to the organization committee and then back to the district board and hopefully, time permitting, particularly within budget time or with the budget sessions that we're going to be having, have that concluded by the end of the year, effective January 1, 2022, on both of those. We have, as you know, from an email I sent out several weeks ago, the President Biden's action plan on COVID and the mandates that were called for or that he directed OSHA to develop through an emergency order and emergency regulations. The regulations have been promulgated by OSHA. They have been forwarded to the White House. The White House has since passed them on to the Office of Management and Budget. I just heard today that we expect those rules to be issued tomorrow. There is a comment period on these interim rules. They're called ETSs. There's a comment period. However, even during the comment period, the rules are effective. What will happen in Connecticut, because we have a Connecticut State OSHA that is a delegated OSHA authority for our state, they will have 30 days from tomorrow, if those rules are issued tomorrow, 30 days from tomorrow to promulgate rules that are at least as stringent as the federal rules. They can be more stringent, but at least as stringent. In all likelihood, they'll adopt the federal rules. They only have 30 days to do their work. Those will be the rules that we'll be targeting and deciphering, interpreting as we move forward. But certainly, the federal rules will give us a very good idea But certainly, the federal rules will give us a very good idea of where the state's going to go. That is my report. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner?
Yes, the Colebrook Dam, it's, that seems to be a very short leash and could be put on anything. Does that mean we can take it out of the budget?
Not, I wouldn't take it out of the budget. I defer to Scott in terms of how it's being handled in the present budget, but I wouldn't take it out of the budget. We do not have, I just, I asked Scott prior to the meeting, whether we received an invoice from the Army Corps for the present, their current fiscal year. We have not yet. But I hope it's a short leash. I hope the timing is right. I've been told by our lobbyists that the amendment that we've drafted, and that's being reviewed and passed on to the Army Corps of Engineers drafting office, can be attached to any legislation. It doesn't have to be germane to levees, or dams, or anything, or reservoirs, or anything of that nature. So, and we have hired federal lobbyists that have worked both sides of the aisle. So, we're encouraged that we'll get both Republican and Democrat support. And I'm encouraged by the fact that with very quick research by our lobbyists, we've found at least 10 situations similar to this, where the Congress has acted to deauthorize these projects. So, it's not uncommon. I'm sure there's more than 10, but they've uncovered 10. So, I'm cautiously optimistic, but I'll turn to Scott quickly, if I could, to see how we handle it. I think we're okay on the budget, but I'll defer to Scott.
Yeah, thank you. So, as I've mentioned before, the federal government is on a October to September budget. So, last year, when we put that money in the budget, it was in anticipation of another million-dollar bill. We did not receive that because they didn't spend the money, $800,000, from the previous year. So, last year, we only owed them $150,000. We still only owe them $150,000. But we put the 1.4 in there in anticipation of receiving a bill this year that would be in that range of 1.4. So, we, the board asked us, and we did, to allocate that specifically to an account that could not be spent on anything, so it was not. So, that money was simply moved over from last year and put into this year's budget. If we were to receive, and we typically receive the Army Corps bill in late October, if we were to receive that in late October, which is impossible because it's November, we would then be able to reduce the money in the budget, and therefore, we could reduce the water rate. But we have yet to receive that bill. Our last conference call with the Army Corps, which was about six months ago, they had indicated that the bill should only be about $400,000, but we have not seen anything yet. Because, as you know, the last letter I sent them, I'm questioning all of their bills since 2016. So, we're waiting to hear from the Army Corps.
Let me just address a little more of this. This evolved in, what was it, Chris, September? Actually, the end of, yeah, in September. We had direct negotiations with congressional leadership on this issue, and it was brought to our attention that there were several legislative pieces that were pursued this way, and that it was generally honored on both sides of the aisle relative to their success with the Army Corps, which brought us to the recommendation by both the Democrats and the Republicans to submit the legislation, which we've done, the request for legislation. And the lobbyists were involved in that process, too, so that we felt fairly comfortable with the process, following the process. The $1.4 million was also put in by virtue of the fact that we were anticipating litigation in this, because if we didn't, if the Army Corps did not yield on the issue, we were going to be faced with a litigation, were we not, Chris?
Well--
Potential--
It would have led to, it may still--
Yeah, right. If the legislation isn't successful.
--chance that it could lead to litigation. But the 1.4 was budgeted for, not necessarily for cost of litigation--
No, not cost of litigation, but the effect of litigation failure.
Right.
So, that was how that evolved, and as a result, we're very encouraged, and we're still more encouraged, with the course of action that's taken, it's being drafted, as proposed. And I would assume, we even, we had discussions with the congressional people that control the budget. So, it's a course that we're going to follow, and it's a course that, I think it's eight to 10 other pieces of legislation that have been successful, have pursued and have followed. So, we feel fairly comfortable on that, as well as the fact that we're not receiving billing from the Army Corps. So, that, we felt was a very successful encounter with those specific types of people in that process.
Chris? But, I'm sorry. Who's, go ahead. He's already asked a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, I want to thank you for all, everything you've been doing. As a member of the legal review subcommittee with Jackie and Cal, there's a few of us that are concerned with some of the invoicing from Sandler and Mara. And we're wondering whether or not South Meadows, or Hartford Solid Waste, or Mara, are these things that the MDC has already authorized for this attorney to work on?
Well, I've authorized the attorney to work on it because they've been, it's been an issue that the MDC, if not specifically, at least generally, have been advised of, and it's been worked, it's been ongoing. Jim has experienced in that area, energy generally, and also in the trash facility down in the South Meadows. As I've discussed with you, and I've discussed with the chairman, as we move forward, there's going to be a time relatively soon that either through your committee, through strategic planning, or the board generally, we're going to have, there should be a discussion about how much further we go on this issue. Issue being the trash facility in the South Meadows, and how, what responses or what roles, if any, that the MDC might have in that.
If these are important issues and stuff, can the staff handle this instead of using an outside counsel? That would be my next question.
Yeah.
Because there's a tremendous amount of expense going through here that I think is unnecessary.
And that's fair. I've reported, as I've reported to the board and reported to the committee, we have a different arrangement this year with several of our attorneys. For example, the collection attorneys are collecting their fees from the debtor, from the delinquent rate payer, rather than from the MDC, and that's a change from years past. And that's worked out very well. At the end of this year, we hope to be at a net zero. We have some older files that handle under the old payment arrangement, fee arrangement, but we hope to be at a net zero by the end of the year in terms of our costs. As to this particular contract, we have a retainer agreement with, or engagement agreement with Attorney Sandler's office. He gets paid a fixed amount if he spends more time than anticipated on this issue. It's not an hourly billing, so he gets, he's at a fixed amount that would not increase. So, we've kept a lid, a limit on the amount that we're paying for the service. But again--
Shouldn't some of these issues come to strategy or something first, before we spend money?
Well, again, the issue has come to the board generally. Has the board taken any formal action on this issue? The answer is no. Should the board, whether it be through strategic planning, Public Works, or through the board directly, should they have a formal consideration of where we go? I think at a point where we have some direction, yes, but we're really exploring this as a potential opportunity. And if you'd like, I think it may be worth the time to have this specifically on a strategic planning agenda. I think you have a meeting coming up in short order--
Discuss it there.
--and have it there. And I'll have Attorney Sandler here to report on what he's been doing and what his recommendations might be going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Ray?
I just saw these bills. This is over $100,000. January 5203, February 12,564, March 11,706, so on and so forth, gets down to 5,800. For professional service rendered during the month of January till today, in connection with the South Meadows development project, including city officials. I don't see your name once. These are all itemized bills. I don't see Scott's name once in these meetings. I don't remember this board, or any subcommittee, authorizing $100,000. Last year, I made a motion to cut $200,000 from legal, and I wish we had done it, because I think this money is just wasteful spending unless this board, as a whole, authorizes you to spend that money, okay? And I don't, maybe the three people you just named knew about this, but I don't think a majority of the board knew that this $100,000, $80,000, whatever, I didn't add them all up. It's close to 100,000, though, because I added up 80 and 18, okay? So, 98. Has ever authorized this spending. And, you know, for Hartford Solid Waste Plant, for South Meadows Solid Waste, for professional service rendered during the month in connection with South Meadows Development Project. If the majority of this board wants to do that, that's great. And I'm not saying I'm against that project. I'm against the way the money's being spent by your department without us, the board, the full board, not three, four people knowing about it. That's all I got to say. So, I would hope, Scott, you would stop this wasteful spending until the full board acts. And starting in January, I will make a motion later at the next meeting, I'd ask it to be on the agenda, that starting in January, any money spent for outside your budget, I know you have your lobbyists, I know you have, and I'd be happy to work with you in putting together a resolution, I'm not trying to tighten your budget, but any outside money for outside attorneys comes to this board for, before you go out and start spending money. You have your four collection lawyers, that's fine. You have your lobbyists, that's fine. But any other legal work, the full board knows about it before we spend the money. That's all I'm asking.
I understand you've authorized the legal department, through me, to spend up to a certain amount each year. In 2019, my budget, yearly budget for outside legal services was $400,000. We came out back with an unused surplus, I don't know the exact amount, Commissioner, but an unused surplus, because we've been very circumspect with the monies that we spend on outside lawyers. In 2020, you authorize the same amount, the $400,000, and that's where this $80,000 comes from. In years past, the monies expended, and that's not just on Attorney Sandler, but the money spent--
No, I know.
The money spent for outside counsel was close to, much closer to $400,000, if not more than that. And through the work of, it was significantly more, three times more. And through the work of Attorney Halloran, and his legal team, including me and John and the others down at the office, we take, we took on more legal work in-house. We were able to reduce that budget in one year under Attorney Halloran's leadership from $1.2 million down to the $400,000.
I say you can reduce it more, okay? Without cost--
I understand. If I can just--
Us hold on it, is all I'm saying.
If I can just finish. I appreciate what you're saying, but just, please allow me to finish. The budget was reduced for this, for outside legal counsel from $1.2 million down to $400,000. We've more than lived within that budget. As things come up, there's a certain, there's a certain amount of discretion that I should have as district council to spend money within a budget that you've allocated. And I don't mind reporting as to where I spent it, and I reported to the committee of three where the money is being spent. I sent the invoices, not just on that, but also on squire, patent, bugs, because that's another engagement letter retainer, that if we pay a certain amount each month without an hourly billing. And I did send that to the three people on that informal subcommittee, not to expect them to approve it retroactively, but for their knowledge, their information, because that's how I'm spending the money. I don't regret allocating that amount of money for Attorney Sandler. The work is being done, should be disclosed to the entire board. It has been in the past. There's been no formal resolution from this board, I concede that. But board members, through the chairman, has been informed as to what's been happening down at the South Meadows, the work that's been done, not just by Attorney Sandler, but by, there's a, there's a subcommittee over at the city council with their work. At one point, we had a member of my staff on the trash board at the city council. He has since not resigned from that position. So, there was engagement, there was involvement, and Attorney Sandler continues to monitor and be engaged in that, in that involvement, in that project.
Chris, I'd like to sit with you someday. I'd like you to go line by line--
Okay. Could we--
We have benefited--
Can we go through the chair? Ray? Ray, can we direct this through the chair, rather than having a free-for-all here? Are you through?
I'm done.
Al?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my concern here, having--
Oh, sorry.
My concern here, having come out of corporate legal staff and part of my career, I want us to be a little careful, and no disrespect to you, Ray. I want us to be very careful. This board is not qualified to practice law. And I think that we need to be very careful in terms of, we have basically our corporate counsel, and we are going to have to rely upon the discretion and the professionalism of the corporate counsel to determine when it is appropriate, under circumstances, to retain outside counsel. Now, I think it's important that we keep a watchful eye on money going out. I think that is prudent. I think that that's part of our fiduciary responsibility as the steward of this organization. But I also think that, given the very complicated nature of some of the issues that this corporation is facing, that it is prudent for us essentially to be out front on a lot of the issues that we have either been a part of, or that we are going to be a part of, because of the way things are going. Trash, solid waste issue was really part and parcel of this organization, as a matter of fact, in this area, if it would not have been for the MDC. We all know that CRRA basically would not have been able to operate the way it did for as long as it did. We've got energy issues. We've got the stormwater issue. And I think that it is prudent for us to give our legal people the kind of flexibility that will enable them to do the forward thinking and plan, and to have people out there. If we don't have people like Jim Sandler out there, a lot of times, things are going to get done. The door is going to be closed, and then we've got to really climb a real mountain. I just think, once again, you know, once again, I understand about expenses, but I think that the department was operating within the agreed-to budget. He exercises, our counsel exercises control. So, I think that I would just, once again, advise my colleagues to think very carefully about this. And let's not make a move that is precipitous and will come back to haunt us, because we just, we're not qualified to practice law. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Just one point on that. We're presently in a situation with an energy that is going to require our counsel and expertise-- expertise relative to what we can do and cannot do within the context of, what's it, the one-point-five-million-dollar increase we had in, in energy, um, that we have not looked at in the last three to four years because we have been pursuing a fixed contract that we had, that we bid, what was it, eight cents or six cents?
Six cents.
Six cents. That's over. Um, the cost of energy is skyrocketing, and there are strategic ways that we have, we can pursue, uh, that can curtail those costs within the confines of Connecticut state law in relativity to peak shaving, which is, peak shaving is something that saves everybody money if it's done properly. Uh, and this is an issue that we're looking at very closely because this is a year that the energy bid, the energy, um, the energy bid is up, and, uh, it's going to require a significant involvement with our legal staff because of some of the relationships we have with DEEP, some of the relationships we have with, uh, other institutions of the state of Connecticut as to what we can and cannot do within the context of this, this concept of, of dealing with energy and trying to reduce dramatically that cost. So that's something that we have to depend upon our legal staff to deal with, and that's our chief legal person. We've adopted a budget. We have a, a, a certain amount of money where he has latitude and discretion, shares it with a subcommittee, and, um, and that's the way we've adopted the budget. Um, and ultimately, we are dealing with it in that concept. Commissioner Patel.
At the time when we identify a project or activity, we should set out some budget, and then depending upon which department it should go to, they can explain that. Apparently, there was, that was not done. There was only one mention about solid waste. I didn't know or didn't understand why we are doing anything on that issue. So we should have a, some one-page explanation to all members, what our role is, what we are planning to do, and how much we are willing to spend at this time, which year, in year by year. And that could, can avoid all issues related to who you hire, what you do, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's another question about, uh, legal services, then go ahead, because my question's not about that. It was about a different issue with, with them. So if you want to let somebody else go first, I don't want to.
Commissioner.
Yeah. Hey, I'm, obviously, I'm new to this thing. I'm trying to kind of get up to speed a little bit, but are these, like, the South Development, is this legal stuff or business stuff? And again, a little, again, I try to pay attention to everything, but it seems, uh, again, a lot of this should be done with, by businessmen, not necessarily legal stuff. Is South Meadows all, these law, we need lawyers on everything? And again, I'm going to pay attention as much as I can, but, uh, it just seems like you have a lot of lawyers. South Meadows is all lawyers, not businessmen?
No, it's, it's, it's not all lawyers, but it's...
EP, I see, again, it's all lawyers, not businessmen. Do we need all those lawyers? Can't it be done by businessmen, internals, you know? Not to put away, go away from the lawyers, but I'm just saying, we seem to be doing a lot of lawyer stuff where businessmen could take care of it. That's, uh, I understand what you're saying, there's a certain amount of expertise, but the same sense is, I say, you worked in the legal world. I, I own a company, we make waste treatment systems. I do big things with Boeing and Pratt &amp; Windy. I've, I've owned my business for forty years. I don't think I've ever had a lawyer do anything, so I, and I understand what you're saying. It's a different world, but I've never had a lawyer do anything.
You're selling a prop.
And I've always been learning, years ago, old guys used to tell me, if you're negotiating with a vendor or contractor or a purchase order, when a lawyer walks, walks into room, we usually leave. So I'm just saying, I just, you know, we do a lot of lawyer stuff here, and I'm just going to try to pay attention. Like, South Meadows, is that all lawyer work, or should be some, I know you need help, you're a sort of sharp guy, but I'm just trying to pay attention.
No, I understand. And you do do a lot of legal work here, and most of that legal work, quite frankly, is handled in-house through your, your legal staff. So in this particular case, there are legal issues involved with the mirror contract, how far, how long that goes out, what are they trying to do other than whether it's converting to a transfer station or leaving the city altogether?
Is that a lawyer, though, or a business? Again, I, I'm not doubting you guys, you know what you're doing, but I'm just trying to pay attention.
I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, but I think it's a blurred line, and I think it's a gray area. So to the extent that DEEP's involved and that, um, there's been, uh, certainly an interest expressed by some that, uh, we may have an oppo, I don't want to say opportunity, but we may have some role in what, what replaces, if anything, what replaces the trash plant down in the South Meadows and its effect. We do have a facility in the South Meadows. We have, uh, a certain amount of acreage holdings in the South Meadows, and, you know, whether it's, uh, a trash facility or other types of development, there is some interest in the MDC generally, I would assume, in development.
You know, I agree with everything you're saying, but the question is, to me, if I was watching...
And I get your point. I honestly...
Yeah, I see. Do we need an outside lawyer to this, or do we have internal business guys?
No, I, I appreciate that. No? I appreciate that comment, and, and...
I think you're doing fine, I'm just...
And perhaps, and perhaps when or if this comes to the strategic planning or to the district board in a more formal way, then maybe there's a, a different allocation of duties and roles, and, uh, maybe, maybe you, the decision is made to, uh, ratchet back on the legal side of things and, and ratchet up, if at all, on the business side of things, or the engineering side of things. But that's where we are right now, but obviously, that could change.
Very good.
Jackie.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think this is a much larger issue than, um, what we're talking about with legal. This is really about what are our core business practices and where we're going to go in the future as far as our strategic plan, which we're all working on right now. So when that is, and I'm not trying to put this discussion off whatsoever, but I think what we need to do is we need to look at those things that are core to our mission in delivering services and being a quasi-agency and, you know, a multi-municipality, um, agency that provides services, um, to our district towns. So I think it really needs to stem back from that, and I can't agree more with Commissioner Patel when he said, if we're looking into other lines of business or expansion of business, we should look at it from a very business point of view. What's our budget to research it? Who's the best to do it? How are we going to do this? And then, let's move forward or not. Um, we have finite staff here at MDC, and I think we have to be very careful about where we want them to go as far as research, what new lines of business, what we want to add to their plate. We want them to provide clean, fresh water and get rid of the other stuff that we don't want. So I think we need to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball as far as where we are setting our priority with our staff here at MDC and make sure that we're moving in the right direction, but then also listen to our municipalities and also the state. If they want us to get into a different line of business or one that we've been in the past, then let's listen to them. Let's set up a budget about how we're going to make the decision, and then let's move forward. And I think we'll see some of this in our budget, hopefully, and have the opportunity to amend it to move forward in that capacity.
Further questions?
Yeah, I got one more thing.
Buddy, Buddy and then Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question, uh, I know this is on the, the council's report, my question's probably as much for Scott Jellison as it is for Chris Stone, but it's about the DEEP, our current, you know, status of our relationship with DEEP over the landfill issue. And, um, this, this discussion's been going on here, it sort of reminded me of, uh, I, I'm not sure on the timing on this, but I think it's been over four years, Scott, that we ran into this, but, uh, closer to, between four and five years...
Two thousand sixteen, August of sixteen.
Okay, yeah, so, so I was right, it's about five years, then, just somewhere around there. And, you know, at one point, this body voted to send DEEP a notification that we were going to close the, uh, the sewer line to the, basically, it's a sewer line, uh, uh, it's connected to our sanitary sewer system, to the landfill. Uh, and that was because it was our understanding at that point that damage was being done by this material, um, that was flowing into our sewer, uh, sewer system, that it's pretty toxic and that, um, there are a couple, on the way to the plant from the landfill, there are at least two, I think Sue Nigrelli may have said, four, combined sewer overflows that dump right into the Connecticut River. So whatever it's, whatever's going in there is damaging the pipe, is going to do some serious damage to the river as well. But we were advised later that, that we couldn't really do that, we couldn't really shut it off without creating a liability, another liability for ourselves. So my question to, to, um, to really, for, for both of you is, um, are we continuing to monitor the damage that was done? We've already done repairs, my understanding, we've already done some repairs in that area. But are we continuing to damage the, the, to monitor the damage, and are we trying to assess what the value of that is, uh, as we move forward? I know, just the amount based on the charges that we established and then modified and everything, it's still ten-million-dollar, or more than ten-million dollars that we thought that they should have paid us by now, uh, with respect to this stuff. But essentially, uh, I know, Chris, you said tonight that we're still being patient. I, it's been five years, I, it's, it's pretty patient, I think, but, um, but are we doing that? Is, is further damage being done to our system, and is it having an effect on the plant in any way, uh, that we've continued to let this go on for so long? And Scott, maybe, and Chris?
Yeah, so, and I, I have reported this, uh, at our board meetings, uh, when we raised this issue, Chris and I have been talking about this, uh, we've been in, in quote negotiations with, with, um, Betsy Winfield from DEEP and, uh, Dan Salton from the AG's office. Um, the challenge that we have, as you mentioned, we, we did, uh, write a letter, threatened to shut them off, and then we received a letter back from the commissioner saying, if you do, you'll be in violation, um, of state law. And so we immediately had meetings with DEEP and tried, from there, started to, tried to negotiate this issue away. Um, the challenge that we have, or I have, is I am aware, and we've been aware, that the damage, uh, that's occurring of the siphons that go under the highway that serve the landfill, uh, exist. And I reported, uh, at this board that I had conversations with new staff from EPA to see if there was any way they could assist us, uh, in, in this issue and, and forcing DEEP to pay to fix the pipes. That really didn't, uh, have any legs, so to speak, uh, based on, uh, our conversations with, uh, EPA staff in Boston. And so the position was, we're aware of something, and do I ignore it because they won't pay, or do I fix it? So the answer is, we're fixing it and making sure that that siphon is operational, uh, because otherwise, the MDC will be accused of knowingly allowing, um, the infrastructure to fail, uh, and then, um, we could be liable, um, for environmental, um, damage. So we have and continue to, to clean the pipes, the siphons. Uh, it is about a two-hundred-and-some-one-thousand-dollar bill to replace them. DEEP has said, uh, to us, Chris and I, that if we were to negotiate, they, they supported the cost to replace those pipes. Uh, but in the meantime, yes, we've, we've, we've cleaned the pipes to make sure that they're, they're, they're operational.
And if I could just add to that, and I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but, but the, um, we have been patient. Uh, and, and my report was, was brief because it's, it's somewhat frustrating, the whole situation, quite frankly, with, with DEEP. And I should have explained that while we're being patient on the negotiation side, we still have two claims before the Claims Commissioner, the timing of which we have no control over. Um, there were somewhere up to two to three thousand cases that had yet to be taken up by the Claims Commissioner over the past several years that have, which caused the legislature to adopt a new policy for Claims Commissioner, uh, actions or submittals, um, that is supposed to be, or was supposed to be designed to expedite the, and, and to address the backlog within the state Claims Commissioner Office, Commissioner's Office. And over the summer, they're in the process of hiring temporary attorneys general, uh, to, assistant attorneys general to deal with the backlog. We, uh, the, the timing of our filings brings us into a, um, a group of cases that would get expedited treatment once that program gets off the ground. I don't think that's years away, that's a matter of months away. Um, so those are moving forward. We haven't given up on those. Um, we have asked for a monetary, uh, resolution or a payment from, through that, those actions. We've also asked for, in lieu of that, permission to bring a, uh, civil action against the state for those monies. So, and that has taken a long time, no question. Um, they've now staffed that office, uh, in, in a way that hopefully will get some hear, some hearing on the merits. Uh, but that being said, um, the time they've taken to process not just our claim, but the other thousands of claims that are sitting over in the State Commission, Claims Commissioner's Office, we had no control over. Uh, we did support the legislation, uh, last, uh, last session that provided for this expedited process, um, and, and hopefully, we'll get some, some, uh, feedback on the merits within a relatively short period of time, at least a period of time that's much shorter than what we've spent thus far with the Claims Commissioner.
Let me, let me just add on to that, because I gave you a report about what happened in this, in the session on the, uh, adoption of the, uh, budget through the, um, the process they had in the legislature. Uh, we dealt politically with this with the Appropriations Committee. The Appropriations Committee submitted a bill that paid us fully on these fourteen-million dollars and addressed the issue of going forward. It was put into the budget, and the way the budget was adopted this year, uh, at the close, was that they have the implementer of the budget. And the agreement at that implementation of the budget was that if either the governor or either house of the legislature objected to a, something going into this, what they call the implementer, uh, and there were several issues that were not relative to the budget but were accepted, and that's the way the legislature puts a whole series of things, like a Christmas tree together. And, uh, the last moment, the last hour, the governor's office through the, the governor's chief of staff objected to this, which meant that there was one objection, they were going to take it out. Um, and it was with, and the, the excuse was that we were still in litigation with the state of Connecticut at that point in time, and, uh, I think we had this whole discussion before this board, and that, uh, the existing commissioner of DEEP had been sued, um, directly, uh, as an individual, not as the DEE commissioner for failure to, uh, to, to do her duty. Um, and that was still pending, and the, the chief of staff asked that it be removed from the, uh, implementer, and they did because there was an objection. Uh, subsequent to that, or about the same time, but it had not cleared, Chris?
It was subsequent to that, that this board voted to withdraw that, both lawsuits, the lawsuit against the commissioner of DEEP personally and the lawsuit against the department generally, um, in large part because, uh, the remedy that we were seeking was, was a remedy that we never would have exercised. And so even if you won, even if the court said you have the authority to shut that down because they're not paying, that's at the state level. You still had, as Scott pointed out, you still had the potential liability, real liability, of violating the Clean Water Act by creating a situation where there's pollution entering to the, to the environment of the state of Connecticut and be not only liable as a board, but liable personally. So it was not a risk worth taking. It's a, it was a remedy that you were asking for that you would never have exercised, and you were spending a lot of money to get there. And so it was the collective decision of this board over the summer to withdraw those two lawsuits, and, and I still stand by, uh, the fact that that was the right decision to make. Uh, so we cleared the deck, uh, and we went back to the...
We were supposed to negotiate a settlement, too, at the same time, right?
And we are, and we are negotiating a settlement, Dominic, and we met with the state, we met with the state. That wasn't a condition of withdrawing it, but it was a statement that we made that we would go back to the drawing table, uh, back to the negotiating table, and we did. And we met with them on, uh, several occasions with their staff. We reached a point where they were coming back to us for a, a higher number than they had offered back in, I want to say, uh, July of last year, or August of last year.
It was in twenty.
And it was, yeah, last year. And then, um, and, uh, I was, we were told, uh, we had asked for a response by September one. We were told that it's more likely that a response, a response would not be forthcoming until on or about October one. October one, two thousand twenty-one came and went. October one, two thousand twenty-one came and went. I sent an email to the Assistant Attorney General on October fifth, and I haven't heard back since. So if you sense a, a level of frustration on my part, I can only imagine how, how you feel. So we continue down that road, and we do have a plan, which I, we can discuss in executive session if you'd like, because it involves pending litigation. We do have a plan going forward that calls for a legislative solution to this, to this problem.
And by the way, there would have to be a legislative solution regardless of what the negotiation was because it exceeds a certain dollar amount. And that would have to go to the legislature. The legislature is in support of this, and I think that we're close enough that we will be able to, in the next session, affect a political solution to this issue. Anybody that's dealt in the legislature and has dealt with it understands that it's not an easy process. Sometimes it takes two, three times around in the legislature. And if you've had some experience with the legislature, you would understand that. But what, regardless of what the settlement is that we make with, with the Attorney General and OPM is it, that would still have to go to the legislature for final disposition. We've, we, again, we will be glad to have an executive session to discuss that, but it's a strategy that we're, we're talking about, and it should not be discussed in a public forum of this nature. So that's-
And maybe the answer, maybe the answer to that is that, if I might, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Is placing this on specifically as an item on the next board agenda, which would be December six.
And have an executive session on it.
And then have more detail then.
And we should have more, more clarity, hopefully, from the Attorney General's Office, which was, should have come to us sometime during the summer, and it's now November.
How long has it been since we withdrew those two cases?
Can we have a process here? And, and that's, that's what we have. Dominic, you have a question?
I, I, I mean, it was my question, is it okay?
Okay.
Dominic, if you want to speak on it.
Go ahead, go ahead. Let's finish up your-
I would like to finish up, Bill, because-
I'm sorry.
The answer to the, to my question went in a totally different direction than I was looking for, but go ahead.
No, no, no. We want you to finish up, then Dominic can-
All right, so, so, and I thank, thank you, you know, for the comments and for the updates on it. And Chris, you know, do sense, I, I, I'm, you know, as frustrated as anybody about it because, as you and some other people know, that, you know, that, that issue became a pretty serious issue between the, during the last administration between us. So it's crossed over administrations and goes on, and I, I don't, Bill, you've mentioned legislature a lot of times, and I think, for me, it is what it is. I'm not asking about that. I, I think I was asking to, for Scott to talk about, and for Chris to talk about what we tried to do about it, the damage that's happening to our system and the potential damage that could happen to the Connecticut River, for which we're spending billions of dollars trying to clean up. And, you know, this, this threat's just sitting there, could, could cause serious damage if this got out. So the question is that, you know, I think that at some point we should move forward, whether the, the negotiations or payments or anything are completed with the state of Connecticut, we should move forward with providing some level of safety with this, which in my mind is not a legal thing, certainly in my professional career. I mean, there, there are ways that we could treat this waste. And, and believe it or not, it wouldn't take a, you know, I mean, the, the kind of facility that it would take would be about as big as the air conditioner for this building is, could treat the amount of waste that's coming out of there, protect our pipes, protect the Connecticut River, and, you know, could easily be part of the Clean Water Project to say that we're going to do a study, just a study, what would it take? I've seen treatment systems that treat ten times the amount of waste that's coming out of this landfill with equipment that's built, called package units, comes on a train or on a back of a trailer truck, gets dropped off at the site, somebody plugs in and they start cleaning it up. That's entirely possible. But I really think that, you know, given the amount of time that's gone by and given what we can see down the road in the future, what might happen, I mean, if we got this, these funding from, what would we do with it? I mean, I think we ought to do this with it. But I, I would ask, and I'll ask at a more appropriate time in our meeting, Mr. Chairman, if we can commission a study to look at what would, what it take to treat this waste. I think we'd be doing the state of Connecticut a big favor because there are literally dozens of landfills just like this one, either closed or still open. They're all leaking this stuff somewhere because obviously, and it's ubiquitous across the state. And if the state agrees to pay us to do something with it, think about how long that line's going to be behind us to get paid to do something with all the other landfills. So I think that may be what they're concerned about, one of the things they may be concerned about, and I think I'm right about that. But I think it's time for us to move forward. It's been five years that this threat has been here. Our equipment's being damaged, there's threats to the Connecticut River. I would ask, and I'll do it at an appropriate time during a meeting, that we open up at least a study, an engineering study, what it would take to treat this, this waste before it gets in our system. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thank you for your comments on it.
Buddy, let me just answer that, with the, we've dealt with the state on that. They, they, three years ago, it was four years ago?
They did a study.
They did a study?
That was for PFAS though, not-
No, no, it was not.
I thought you said it was for PFAS.
No, it included PFAS. We were not aware of it at the time, but it was done in October-
But they had carbon filters that they put in there. They studied the filters and all of a sudden, and claimed that they resolved the problem, but all of a sudden eliminated the carbon filters and were not, were not willing to share the study that they had done on this issue. So, you know, there, there's been a lot of studies done relative to, or at least that study, that they claimed to resolve the issue, but they would not share that information.
Forgive me, I can't imagine them, I, I mean, I'm sure they did that, but I can't imagine anyone keeping a secret about how to clean up the waste coming from the landfill.
I'm just telling you-
So I think that we, I just can't imagine that, especially my elected officials. But I would say, we should go ahead with it because we're responsible for our system, for our equipment, and if we don't do something about it, we're going to be paying for it. There's no way, there's no way around it.
Okay, Dominic?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Your date, Dominic, was July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
Scott?
Right.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I'm not telling, I wasn't trying to tell you how to spend the money once we budget it into your budgets. I just don't think we should be spending a penny on the South Meadows. And you have, I have two years of bills here now, okay? I don't see your name there at all getting updates and stuff. And I don't, I may have missed one or two meetings in the last two years. I haven't missed too many, and I do not remember you, in your report, coming back to this board and reporting on the South Meadows, okay? Solid waste for the city of Hartford. I don't remember, Scott, you coming back and telling us in the last two years, I may have missed a meeting. I just want to remind everybody, last time we got involved with rubbish, we had a thirty-three, and correct me, it might, I might be off a million, a thirty million, thirty-three million dollar lawsuit against the RRA. We collected, was it eight or ten million?
Eight.
Eight, it was eight million. And our legal bills to collect that were ten million. So I just don't think we should be into solid waste. And when I see the last two years, and like you said, it was four hundred thousand, not all of it, of course, on solid waste, but some of it was. When I see hundreds of thousands of dol, or hundred thousand dollars being spent and you're not reporting back to this group on why you're spending, that we possibly might, that's where I'm offended. As a Commissioner.
Further questions?
We are the Policy Board of the MDC. We're not the lawyers, no. We're the Policy Board. Thank you, Chris.
Commissioner?
Chairman, I, I have something else, but I would have to agree that I don't recall in the last few years of meetings, anything about this stuff. But the, my question on this is, how are we doing with Hartford bills? You know, what's, what's up with, with the, the money that is owed for both the housing and the?
So the, and I have Kelly here, but the Housing Authority's been excellent. We've resolved all of our issues, they're up to date. They've paid us what we've, they, we believe they owed us. And there was some reconciliation between the Housing Authority and the city of Hartford. For example, there was twenty-seven accounts that were, quote, in Housing Authority that actually were in the city of Hartford. Working with the city of Hartford, as we, I reported, the letter that we sent to the mayor, there was eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand was associated with cleaning the catch basins. We have not been successful in, in receiving that. We have had conversations with the mayor and his staff, and that's really part of the MS four conversation on the agenda. But the, the water bills, we went from a couple hundred thousand dollars to one point eight million dollars in receivables on a, on a monthly basis. So the work that Kelly and her staff have done has gone from two hundred thousand dollar collection to one point eight million. So of the eight hundred thousand we reported, three eighty-five was the cleaning of the catch basins. So let's say four hundred thousand was water bills. And we're not completed yet because it's pretty complicated to, to resolve each account. But the long and short of it is, we believe that the city will eventually owe us about half of that four hundred thousand. And we're reconciling, but I have said to staff, we're not going to pay this account or that account until we have resolution to the three eighty-five. So we're hoping, working with the, the staff at the state, I'm sorry, at the city, that we can come to some resolution. And the chairman and I have had conversations directly with the mayor on this.
And, and that was all part of the MS four issue, that we have a MOU that we've prepared. It's being sent to the Public Works, the Public Works Committee. That basically deals with the relationship between the city cleaning their streets and, and making sure that our catch basins do not get clogged in these rainstorms. The last piece of that is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that the city of Hartford owes us relative to the, what we take out of the sewers where we had previously, the city had agreed to take that waste from us, and we were putting it in the landfill. They no longer own the landfill, landfill's closed, and we're now negotiating on the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That, of course, has been involved with the whole question of, of, of the problems from rainstorms that we've had, the flooding, the backups, the, and a whole series of other issues that we've come a long way in a negotiation with the city of Hartford. One of those negotiations is a relief relative to the Clean Water Act that we have to do in the North End. It deals with state highways and the drainage that comes off the state highways and the obligation that the state has. And those are in three areas. Blue Hills is, is, the chief executive officer said, we've been in at least three months, two and a half months of negotiations with the city to try to not eliminate, but mitigate those flood, flooding, because the flooding goes into people's homes, the backups happen during that process. Obviously, when you get a hundred or two hundred year storm, the ability to solve that becomes impossible relative to what the design criteria has been for the last forty years. We're at almost a one-year storm in Hartford, and that's what we're going in the Clean Water Act. So that, that's been a, a process. And the three basic areas that we're dealing with in, in this area, and we'll bring this to the board and we'll have no problem discussing any of these, these issues, is that there's the Albany Avenue issue where we were initially gave advice in, what was it, oh, oh eight or oh?
Well, the discussion occurred really from two thousand five, right up to two thousand twelve.
Well, right. And it, that, that was a recommendation to the, the state of Connecticut to put a seventy-two inch water, a drain in, in the-
Albany Avenue.
Albany Avenue. And the city, not this administration, two administrations back, did not want to maintain it because we don't maintain stormwater in, in stormwater drains, except in Hartford in the system itself. And the state of Connecticut did not want to make the expenditure. Of course, that was before the climate change and a lot of things that we're in the middle of right now. The other piece is up in the Blue Hills Avenue area where you still have basically the same thing. It's a state highway and you need drainage of seventy-two inch pipe in that road, discharging into Gully Brook or one of the other natural, that takes it directly into the Connecticut River. The third location is up in North Main Street where the Housing Authority built Stowe Village, the new Stowe Village, and there's been enormous amount of flooding because our sewer cannot, no, can't take anything. And we have assisted the city in looking at alternatives that the city would be involved in up there, and that is to build a storm system, to take it off of ours, but also to take it directly into the river. Now, they can't take our storm sewer, our sewer, because it's a combined sewer, but a new sewer, seventy-two inch, going in one direction, either up Main Street or across to the city retention pond is an alternative. So those are all things that are in discussion, and obviously, not our responsibility from a financial standpoint, that we, there'd be some participation by us because of the Clean Water, the Clean Water Project and the fact that we have to separate some of those streets up through the North, North Main Street area over to the Blue Hills area. So there's some commonality there. But the reality of the issue is, those costs would have to be beared by the state of Connecticut, the city of Hartford, and maybe infrastructure money from the federal government if it ever comes. But there's nothing that's definitive or, or laid out. So that's been the whole process we've been dealing with for the last month and a half, two and a half months with the city of Hartford. Anybody else, someone else have a question over here?
I have a question. Are you, are you, are you still cleaning the catch basins in Hartford now? And are you going to continue to clean the catch basins?
Yeah, so the challenge, the challenge is, and that's what the MS four letter outlines, the challenge is, it's just like the sewer pipe for DEEP. So we're trying to get the city of Hartford to clean the streets per the MS four permit, which is, is dictated by DEEP. And the requirements of the permit is to clean the streets sufficient enough that you do not trip the fifty percent rule. The fifty percent rule is, if the catch basin, you clean it once, we have a two-year cycle to clean the catch basin. If we clean it once, and then within that two-year period, it gets more than fifty percent full, you have to clean it again. So our position is, the city of Hartford needs to clean the streets more often. The problem is, if they're not, then we are forced to clean it. I've actually put on two additional UM ones this year with a, with a vac truck, just so that we can keep up with that MS four mandate. But our goal is, under the MOU, is to charge the city of Hartford for every time we have to exceed the cleaning criteria under the permit, which is no more than once every two years. So that's our challenge is, is do we, if we don't clean it, I mean, the board could tell me, don't clean it, and then we're going to wind up with, you know, flooding streets and flooding-
The three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that supposedly the city of Hartford owes for cleaning the catch basins, did that occur over one year or longer?
Two thousand thirteen.
Eight years.
Once again, why did we let this last so long? Two thousand thirteen to now?
Well, so I have letters, you know, dating back as far as two thousand sixteen about this topic with no resolution. We drafted an MOU in two thousand eighteen, no resolution. There, the two, you know, the, the MS four letter that you have actually was drafted independent of the three storms that we had. The three storms that we had, August nineteenth, August twenty-second, twenty-third, and then September first, was actually a catalyst to, the chairman and I had conversations and meetings with the mayor. We've had meetings out in the public. The, the goal that we have is, is to support the effort of the city. The, the goal that we have is, is to support the effort of the city. But we don't want to incur additional costs because they're not doing their, you know, fulfilling their responsibilities. So that's what the MOU does. The MOU is nothing more than taking the MS4 permit and identifying whose responsibility it is to do that in the permit. And so our goal is, we're going to, and we have, we're, we're charging, we've created a rate structure, which includes not just the material that we're removing from the catch basin, but the man-hours and equipment hours, blue book hours, to say that the, the rate to clean a catch basin, I think Chris is $175?
$155.
$155. So we are going to, anytime we keep track of every catch basin that we clean, and whether it's within the two-year cycle, sometimes we clean a catch basin four times, sometimes we clean it, you know, three times. But anytime we clean it in excess of our permit or their permit, we're going to be charging that rate.
You're going to be billing them on a monthly basis or how often?
Yes. How are we billing that, Kelly? Is that monthly or?
I believe, I believe we've been calculating based on, on the grit. We send the grit out and then we get the grit bills back.
Could you be at, yeah.
Are you billing it monthly, Chris, or are you billing it annually?
In the past, it's been semi-annually for the most part, and it's based on the grit bills, so our disposal cost on the grit material. But the new direction moving forward is we're going to be submitting basically the condition report on the catch basin cleanings that we do. So anything over 50% shows up as red. And we're going to count those catch basins and time those catch basins by $155 unit cost. And that's going to be billed quarterly, Scott. So it's just, it just allows us to bill on a regular basis.
But that'll all come to BPW? So we're, that's what, that's our recommendation to BPW, which will be recommended to the full board.
Right. And Chris, isn't there going to be an increase in the cost that the landfill is requiring that we prepare the discharge, the discharge into the landfill, not the city landfill?
Yeah.
The Windsor landfill?
Yeah.
Isn't that increasing in cost?
As of right now, we have our contract value with Manchester. So that, that, that value will remain the same, and we, we believe it's staying the same for 2022 as well. So we, we carry that price of a tonnage.
Okay, so there isn't an increase in that?
Not in the material, but on the, obviously with the labor and the equipment costs go up on an annual basis.
Yeah, I understand that. But I, okay. Rick, I'm sorry. And then-
Yep, so the, the question that I have, and then I don't, I don't know the question, so I'll let you guys answer it. But would there be any cost savings if you combined the cost of cleaning the streets and then us going in and cleaning the catch basins after they get full? Would there be any cost savings by us just billing Hartford? And I don't think we do street cleanings, but would there be some proactive ability for us to, to maintain the streets on the behalf of Hartford and then charge them instead of having to go in and clean up the mess afterwards?
Yeah, so, so the, this MS4 permit, so the one important part that we've, you know, tried to educate Hartford on is MS4 is all about not cleaning the catch basin. It's about not letting stuff get in the catch basin. Because this is what gets in the catch basin. Garbage, feces from animals, grass, grass nitrogen. Nitrogen, we pay nitrogen credits down at the plant. So any, deep EPA does not want grass, does not want feces, does not want that to get in. So they are responsible under their permit. I'll use West Hartford as an example. What, a, a town that already owns the street and owns the catch basin? A town will decide, is it cheaper for me to clean the catch basin or to clean the street? And because they own both, they can make that decision. And they can, they can adjust their costs as it relates to, it's easier to clean the streets or clean the catch basins. Unfortunately, it's a split responsibility in the City of Hartford because it's a CSO system. So we're incurring costs because it's not like a collaborative discussion. It's just, we're not cleaning the catch basins or the streets, and therefore we have to clean the catch basins. So your answer, your question is no. We don't have the authority or responsibility. You know, you're talking about street sweepers, you're talking about a whole another level of staff to do that, which we don't have.
But Rick, we have at least accomplished one thing that they are now beginning and, and did a pretty good job at our becketting to clean the streets in the last rain, major rainstorm we had. So we are making progress there.
The pictures in the report were pretty egregious. The failures were pretty egregious.
They, they, they came to the party, at least in the last rainstorm. $385,000 is the last part of that, which is part of the, the MO-
MOU.
MOU. So, you know, those are the issues we're, we're still struggling with discussing them. Plus you have the existing problem going on of excessive rain that isn't easy. There was another question? Okay. I'm sorry.
John, just for the record, Commissioner Campbell did not participate in the most recent discussion about the deep situation, nor will she be participating in item number nine, the referral to deep of the MS4 letter.
She had contacted me. She exited and she's not returning for the-
Perfect, thank you.
So that's an abstention.
Okay, item, where are we now?
Number nine.
Item nine, referral to the Bureau of Public Works regarding the letter to Connecticut Deep regarding MS4. Is there a motion to refer?
Move.
And moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 10, Board of Finance, consideration and potential action regarding DPH primacy fee. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution as a motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, who's going to, Scott?
Yeah, this is an issue that I brought to Board of Finance and Water Bureau. So we were responsible to collect the primacy fee, which was to help support a deep's about $2.5 million worth of staffing to oversee the water companies. And July 1st of 2021, they disbanded the, the fee. But because of the six-month lag between the state's budget cycle and ours, we had collected $108,000. So the question for Board of Finance and Water Bureau was, what do we do with that money? We can either give it back to all 102,000 customers, or we can simply use that $108,000 to lower the water rate for this coming year. The recommendation, I believe, was accepted to just simply use the 108,000 to lower the water rate.
Buddy?
Yeah, it was accepted unanimously. I'm sorry, I should have said that before.
Okay.
So it was, it's going to be applied to the 2022 fiscal year, 2022 fiscal year budget as directed by the Board of Finance. Is there a, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee on Organization, consideration and potential action regarding appointment of, we'll take them separately, A, Director of Human Resources. Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Scott?
Yes, thank you. Jamie Harlow, who's here. Jamie, can you wave? Jamie's been with us for two years. She came to us from the University of Hartford, and I brought her in, recruited her to take over the labor relations piece for Bob Zeig because he was doing both jobs at the time. And so she spent two years working with Bob and has done an outstanding job on the labor relations. As Bob retired, I made Jamie acting director, and since went through the formal advertisement selection process. I have selected Jamie, recommended that to the board, the Committee on Organization. And tonight, she is here in front of you for, for acceptance. She's worked 13 years at the University of Hartford. The last five years of her career at the University of Hartford, she was the director of HR. She comes with a lot of experience as it relates to labor relations, employee benefits. And so we're very happy to have her, and hopefully we'll get the support of the full board.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Jamie.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Item B, District Clerk. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Scott?
Um, this is, actually, would you let me?
No, because you'll get it, you'll get it wrong. All right, so it'll be too, take too long. John was appointed as the district clerk some time ago. When he was appointed, he was appointed under a new job description that combined his duties as an assistant district counsel and that of district clerk. Unfortunately, his district clerk position is constituted an office or an officer of the corporation, of the MDC, and those have to be approved by the organization committee and the district board. So we are really just boot, was it, belt and suspenders, correcting an oversight that was made some time ago, not by John, but by somebody who was probably acting in his stead, it was probably me. So I ask you to support the, the motion.
Discussion?
So moved.
We, we, okay. Discussion? It's before us. So moved by Dominic and seconded by Ray? Not? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 12, discussion of the 2022 budget. How are you going to handle this?
So Bob Barron, who's a CFO, we, this is something a little new. We typically, we just felt it was important to have everybody here to just give an update as to where we are. We presented to the towns, we presented to Board of Finance. We'd like to just give a quick summary as to where we are. There's been a lot of, a lot of things that have changed. The chairman mentioned, you know, natural gas prices of 35% increases, and electricity, 20 some odd percent increases. So Bob's just going to give a summary as to where we are and what, what we're going to be presenting on the budget.
Excuse me, Bob. Before you do, what is the course of action after this informal discussions?
This is an informal, so John, we've referred it to Board of Finance?
Board of Finance. Board of Finance is meeting on Wednesday, the 10th. The public hearing is Monday, the 15th. Water Bureau and BPW will meet on the 22nd. Board of Finance is meeting on the 23rd. And then Government and the District Board on December 6th. Those are all the scheduled meetings.
It'll be before the board, December 6th for action.
Correct.
Okay, proceed.
Great, thank you. I, thanks, John. That covered the first slide. I was going to do the agenda, but I'd just like to remind the commissioners that we've had five meetings, three with the towns and two with the Board of Finance. And then you've heard the schedule of events for the rest of November and adoption in December. Prior to me showing the slides that are going to bring you up to date on our current recommendation, I just thought I'd give you some quick highlights of what was introduced during those five meetings. We took a look at the audited financials from last year and compared it to our fund balance policy. The general fund is our sewer fund. And our policy says that we'll maintain a fund balance, an available fund balance, in this case, unassigned fund balance, between 30 and 35%. Well, we actually achieved 38.2%. So that 3.2% in exec, in excess of the top of range was equal to $2.7 million. So we brought that to the town and, the towns and the Board of Finance as a, an additional revenue for consideration. But we also wanted to impress upon, in these meetings, the, the two bodies, that we've done a great deal of work on the expense side, too. The total employee count for the organization has been reduced by 16. Now, the operating expense, which is the sewer and the water, benefited from 10 of those reductions. The other six were, were on the capital expenditure side. But, you know, the, the reduction of the 10 salaries, their colas, their steps, the lower pay for people coming into the positions that have been vacated at a lower rate, all of those added up to a year-over-year decrease of $400,000 in payroll. The towns were amazed by that because that's one of their largest expenditures as well, right? Is your, your operating expense for payroll? Well, we're proposing a budget where we're actually spending less year-over-year. We also had the benefit of renewing a number of our insurance policies. We have the LAP insurance, general liability auto and property. And all of those insurances were, went out for bid and came in effective October 1st? Yeah, October 1st. Our broker had given us an industry range for the increases we could expect in each of the categories, and they were anywhere from 10 to 25%. And we achieved an 11%, 11.7% total increase. So our, our total insurance coverage only went up $706,000. So we, we did quite well there. Two other, this is just a high-level summary. We talked about people, big, big driver of expense, our insurance, big driver of expense. But you know, our OPEB promises to the employees, those health insurance promises, other post-employment benefit OPEB, and our pension. Typically, these are big hitters for increases. But we were fortunate, our OPEB contribution came in. Remember, we go to actuaries every year and they tell us what our employer's contribution should be. It's ADEC, Actuarially Determined Employer Contribution. Well, for our OPEB, it only went up $300,000, or 3.3%. That's from $9 million to $9.3 million. And our pension only went up $100,000, from $7.8 million to $7.9 million. The reason for that is that we had a really good performance of our assets in the market beyond what was anticipated by the actuaries. So they take that benefit the, the subsequent year and reduce the amount that you have to contribute. And so we, we, we did a lot of work on personnel, insurance, OPEB and pension. And the last thing I just want to cover is debt service. You know, I had 14 years as CFO or finance director in municipalities, and our debt service would routinely be about 10% of our operating budget. Well, in this industry, in water sewer industry, heavily capitalized industry, right? We're always buying capital equipment. Our debt service is 35% of our total operating budget. So that's a real big driver of our operating budget. And we wanted to impress upon, you know, the towns and our Board of Finance that we're actively refinancing our debt when there's an opportunity to save money. I've only been here three months and I've, I've already done four debt issues, over $300 million, two in August and two that just priced a couple of weeks ago. We just got the money in today. We closed today. But I just thought I'd let you know that the, the August refunding, that's the way we talk about financing, you know, putting our debt out at a lower interest, we saved over a million dollars. And then in October, we saved, well, let's see, in August, we refunded a part of our 2013 debt issue. And then in October, we refunded the other part. We saved a million four in August and a million one just a couple of weeks ago by lowering the interest rate. But we also had $50 million worth of clean water loans with the state, and there had guaranteed 2%. I would have never, ever thought that you could save money refunding a 2% loan. But we saved $1.1 million by refunding $50 million. refunding $50 million worth of state loans that just closed today. And then lastly, we had.
Have been put into the budget?
Yes, all of, all of that has been incorporated. No, yeah, we, we had firm estimates of what it was going to be. And then the last thing we refunded was the biggest piece was, was the entire 2014 debt issue, and we saved $16.8 million. And when I say saved that, that is, it's a much greater number in reduced debt service payments to the, to the life of the program. The numbers I'm quoting are today's dollars. The present value of the savings was $16.8 million. So those are, that's all the work that we explained to the, the two groups that we were working on reducing our expenditure and making our request as low as possible. So that brings us to this presentation, and I think this is on now. Great.
The Yankees are on, so let's hurry up, Bob.
Yeah, yes. So the, so what we presented in, at the end of September, and I'm not going to go in big detail on this, but if you look at the far right side of the page, you'll see highlighted in pink, a $98.2 million operating expense for sewer, then in the middle, $111.7 million operating expense for water, and we had proposed originally $209.9 million operating expenditure. This is only $4.4 million increase over this year's $205.5 million or 2.1% increase. This was the original proposal. And so what did that generate in ad valorem on the sewer side and water rate on the water side? Well, you'll see in yellow at the top for sewer, that generated a 3.1% ad valorem increase. And right underneath that top yellow on the right, you'll see where we identified the sewer customer service charge increasing from $7 to $9. That, that has been in our proposal since the end of September and has maintained throughout our October recommendation. But on the water side, we said all of our identified expenditures, without any further adjustment, are going to increase that water bill from $405 to $4.24. We identified some potential opportunities that we were going to research. I'll give you the results of that later. But the impact was that the final recommendation is only going to be $4.09, a four cent increase over the $405 or 1% water rate increase. So let's, let's take a look at, this is only a three-slide presentation, so this is the second one, and then we'll finish up here real soon.
Yankees.
Yes, the Yankees are on, right. So the top, we want to let you know what was included in that sewer recommendation at the end of September, is we decreased debt service by $2.5 million because we anticipated that debt service this year, and it didn't occur because that anticipated debt service was from a anticipated debt issuance in 2020 whose first payment would have been this year. We didn't issue debt last year. We issued a bond anticipation note. So we didn't spend that money. So we said, well, we raised enough money to pay for it. How do we give it back? Well, we give it back by reducing next year's debt service payment by $2.5 million. And then I already mentioned the $2.7 million general fund surplus. You know, that's the 3.2% I said at the beginning of the presentation. And this third item is, it reads a little funny, but if you stay with me, we reduced the PMU revenue reduction by $1 million. So what's that mean, we reduced a reduction? Well, if you look at the second sentence, I think it'll become a little clearer. In the PMU revenue in 2020 was $8.3 million, and we reduced it to $6.3 million for the current year. So that was a $2 million decrease. And so we wanted to do another $2 million decrease for next year's budget down to $4.3 million, but we simply couldn't do it and maintain the ad valorem where we wanted it. So we reduced that $2 million reduction to only $1 million. We're going from the current year's $6.3 million to a recommended $5.3 million next year. So that was all included in that 3.1% increase on the ad valorem. But we did identify some other opportunities that we said that we were going to research further during the month of October and ultimately presented to the Board of Finance just last week. We had, on, we had the same thing on the sewer side where we had budgeted for, or excuse me, on the water side, where we had budgeted for a debt service payment that we didn't have to make. But we had a lot of things going on the, on the water side that we didn't have on the sewer. On the sewer side, I was happy to reduce the debt service payment by $2.5 million because we receive 100% of our ad valorem every year. I know that revenue stream is there to pay for what we budgeted this year. But on the water side, remember, we had that $4.6 million non-member town credit that we had issued earlier this year? So if I don't know the water revenues are coming in, I was reluctant to take the $2.7 million we had planned. The, the, the short story is that when we looked at those revenues, even after considering the $4.6 million worth of credit, in the CEO's report, you'll see that we've burned off only three point, well, most of it, 3.8 million of it, but offset by some other favorable variances, we thought we could still take $2.2 million of the 2.7 out and reduce next year's debt service payment by $2.2 million. And, and that's what you'll see in, in the recommendation on the next page. So 2.2, our 2.7 million was planned this year. We're going to recommend that we take 2.2 million of it. But we also said that we would revisit the employee benefits retirement payouts. We, we've averaged paying out $39,000 per employee when they retire. And if you're a union employee, there's another 6% when they buy out a small life insurance promise that we, that we have. So at $45,000 apiece, we were coming up with a $2.4 million number. And so these were all of the things that we're, that we're going to look at in October. But we also found out in October that we had large increases in our forecast, large increases in electricity and a, a gas price that went out for bid. It was the end of a five-year term where we had guaranteed rates for five years. They came in substantially higher for the new five-year term. And the purchase of polymers went up a great deal, and that's something that's used in incineration. So with those things, you know what, I promised only one more slide, but there's actually two. Here's, here's what we ended up with. When we, the other opportunities that I said on the first page, I, I think I, I jumped ahead a little bit, is we're recommending that we take 2.2 million of the $2.7 million surplus from this year. We also said that we would meet with USI, our new benefits consultant. We thought we had some opportunity in our contribution to the insurance fund because we've had, had some very favorable results in our medical claims. But we had just brought in this new benefits consultant, so we wanted to meet with them before dialing it into a recommended budget. And they confirmed with us that they agree that we had $1 million worth of opportunity. So we removed a million there. And then we also heard from the towns, they'd say, wow, you were planning on 55 people retiring. Is there any way there's any opportunity in that? And so we don't know how many people are going to retire. We had a forecast of 55, but we decided to take a half million dollar risk and reduce that 55 number down to 44. So, oh, and then the, the last thing we discovered in our research is we found that the nitrogen credits we had been buying, we could reduce that by $300,000. So those were all wrapped up. If you add the 2.2 in the million and the half million and the .3 million, that's $4 million worth of reductions that we had identified. However, when we took a look at our forecast increase in electricity of 20%, that was an increase of 1.3 million we had not anticipated. The large increase in gas of $1.4 million represents a 100% increase. It, now that's a combination of price and volume. Chris can talk about why we're, we're consuming more, but that's a combination of price and volume. And we had a large increase in the purchase of polymers, about 300,000. If you add up all those guys, what is that, 2, 7, that's 3 million. So if we reduced 4 million, but we identified 3 million that we're adding, we should see about a million dollar reduction in our total increase. So when we dial everything in on this page, the net impact, that's what you see in the third bullet, is we were able to maintain the 3.1% ad valorem increase, and we were able to reduce the water rate from four, or to 409. Remember, on those previous pages, it was 424? So 409 is only a four cent increase over the 405, which is the current year's rate. So that's 1% increase. So let's take a look at what it looks like in the same format that we showed you before. You'll see in the upper right-hand corner, I guess I should turn my page, too. You'll see in the upper right-hand corner that we maintained in yellow the 3.1% ad valorem increase. But what has changed is the water rate in the center. The yellow is no longer 424, it's now 409. And what I find fascinating about a, an operation this size, a $200 million operation, if you look at the very bottom, the operating expense for the current year is budgeted at 205.5 million. This budget that's being proposed is only going up to 209. Now, remember the first slide, it was 209.9? And so it's, when you're rounding everything to 100,000, remember I did the 4 million worth of reductions, the $3 million worth of additions? That's about your million dollar savings. We went down to $209 million. That's only a 3.5 million operational expense increase next year over this year, or 1.7%. So that is, that's what's been presented to the towns and the Board of Finance over the last two months, September and October. And I'm available to answer any questions, if you like.
Ray?
So you're approximately 1% on the water?
Right.
Okay, so I have a $100 water bill. It goes up to 101. What is my bill really going to go up with the added fees, with the charges?
3.6%.
So what would my water bill be going up at the end of the year?
You know what, I, I think we have this here. I, I can show you.
Is it more like 1, 5%?
Oh, I don't, don't do that.
What is it, 3.6?
Sorry. Let's see. I'm not, I'm not. Cancel that, right? I did, I did. I sent it again. It was there, but.
Kelly, isn't it 3.6%?
I think it's 2.66%.
Okay, two.
But I'm just, I just want to get the, the actual dollars from Lisa.
Yeah, I, I think it's 2.6% for the member towns, and because the non-member towns do not pay the, the clean water surcharge, it's less than, it was like .6%?
A half percent.
Yeah, it's just about a half percent.
So it's really, the increase for a ratepayer is going to be approximately 2.6%?
Right, for the bill, for the entire bill.
Well, the bill's what people pay.
No, no.
It's not a typical bill, that's about $2.
What is the?
This is it here?
What is the increase? If you took the ad valorem and you left it at zero, and you moved it over to the water rate, what, how many cents would that increase the water rate?
Oh, well, you have, you have, the, the ad valorem that is charged to the towns is 56 million this year, divided by 102, sorry, divided by 92,000 customers?
I don't have a calculator.
Me either. No, he asked, no, he asked if you move the whole ad valorem.
If you move the whole ad valorem onto the water rate, how much would it increase the water rate? How many cents?
Yeah, so, so $100,000 is one cent. So, so if you take 56 million divided by 100, divided by 92,000 customers?
586.
5.6 million, right?
$586.
$586. So, so $586 divided by 180,000 would be cents, right? Come on, you're a lawyer, you should know this stuff.
Let's see, we, we have, on page five, I think you'll see for our recommendation, the ad valorem was 53.1 million. So 53,100,000. And the, every cent on the water side is $180,000. So if I divide that by 180, 1, 2, 3, that's 295.
Cents.
Cents, so.
But that would be minus the, the previous year. They're only talking about the increase, just the increase.
Oh, of one point.
I'm just saying, I'm, why go to add, why bring it to ad valorem? I mean, you know, you're, you're.
Oh, the increase. So the increase is 3.5 million. If you look at the increase back at one of Bob's slide, the increase.
Is 1.6 million.
It's 1.6.
On the ad valorem.
So 1.6 divided by 180?
Oh, it ought to be really simple, right?
Here's the only problem, we can't pay, we, we can't pay, we can't mix monies, right? So we can't pay sewer operational expenses with water. So they have to be separate.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Under our charter, they have to be separate, separated, right.
So, but it's about 10 cents?
Yeah, it's about 10 cents.
Good, I'm good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry for that.
Another question, Mr. Chairman? Dominic.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could tell me if, you know, every year, the MDC spends a lot of money and time working on the Clean Water Act. Has the MDC been refunded for all the outstanding expenses for this year on their work on the Clean Water Project? And if they have, have, what was that value? And if not, when do you anticipate this to be reimbursed to the MDC?
So I don't quite understand your question, Christian, but let me just explain, let me just.
One bank account.
Let's understand, let's understand the question. Go ahead again, Dominic.
We have one bank account.
Yep.
We're, we're told, this board and the commissioners are told that we have engineers, we have people that are always working on the Clean Water Act. We track that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm asking, I'm asking if we've tracked it for the year, have we been refunded completely for the year? And if not, when will we be refunded? And what is that value?
Yeah, so let me, let me try and answer your question, and if you, if I didn't, then you can ask another question, if that's okay. So the, we, the revenue that we've shown, that Bob showed, it was 8 million, went down to 6 million, and it went down to 3, 5.3 million. So that's actually revenue that the Clean Water Project is reimbursing the MDC. That's one component, reimbursing the MDC from the rate stabilization fund. So we have all the money that we collect from the clean water surcharge, money goes into the account. We collect about $60 million a year. into the account, we collect about sixty million dollars a year. And we basically, by the board, have identified five point three million will come to the MDC, actually dispersed to, as a revenue source, to our towns to reduce ad valorem by five point three million. That is to help pay for, I don't charge directly to a Clean Water Project budget, right? The project that we're doing over here or over there, the engineers charge directly to that Clean Water charge. Chris, myself, high-level administration, that's being, that five-point thing is helping reimburse the, the, the board and the towns for us working on the Clean Water Project. If an engineer who is working on a Clean Water Project, that engineer, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but if that engineer is working on a Clean Water Project, right on their timesheet, they're saying, I worked on this project. We keep track of that. Remember, we're a cash flow system, so we're, we're paying cash from our cash pool, but we're keeping track of what we should be charging. So when we re, we, when we borrow or band monies, that's when we're reimbursing ourselves for, let's say, in the budget, we have, we have an operational staff and we have CIP staff. So that process, we reimburse and pay for the staff, how many staff in CIP this year?
Oh, I wrote it down.
Are we up to date?
So, yes, so the process is, when, when, when people are charging, how do we reimburse for someone's weekly paycheck? Is it quarterly, is it monthly? How do we actually charge the CIP account?
It's, it's weekly.
Okay.
It's in their payroll, it charges.
So it's charged, but if, but if the, but if the project hasn't been bonded yet, and we haven't, haven't actually borrowed the money to actually pay for that project, we're basically using our cash and reimbursing ourselves, correct?
Yeah, the, the answer is yes, and with the, with the general obligation bonds that we issued in August, and the ones that, in the Clean Water Revenue Bonds that were closed just today, we actually sold them a couple weeks ago, but closed, we have been reimbursed.
Okay. So that's kind of how we operate, Commissioner, is that we have this big cash pool and we're paying for things, and then as we get grant money, as we get CIP or Clean Water bonding, we're reimbursing those accounts where it came out of our cash pool.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. One, one small question on this. Talk about challenges with electricity, gas, and polymers. Is gas natural gas or is it gasoline?
Gas, natural gas.
That's natural gas. So, so what about like diesel and, you know, the, the new economy is.
It's crazy.
How do you handle that?
Yeah, natural gas is thirty-five percent increase just in price.
So for gasoline and diesel, we purchase off of the state of Connecticut contract, so we pay no taxes, and we purchase it on the day, we pay for, we, we issue a purchase order on the day that we receive it at the current market price. And it's a much better price, it's the state of Connecticut's price that they're getting themselves. So it's running, I, I know for a fact, because I just signed a purchase order today and, and yesterday, the, with the, the gas price outside is, is three forty, we're paying about two eighty, okay?
Thank you, Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
And that's her manager of procurement role she just, she just mentioned.
Yes, that's, this is my director of procurement hat. I have several hats.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Are there further questions? Okay, thank you, Bob. Item ten, no, twelve, thirteen, opportunity for general public comment. Opportunity for a general. Public comment. Okay. Judy, Judy, we're expecting you. I'm disappointed. Fourteen, Commissioner's comments and questions. Here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually Judy made this comment earlier this evening about the rates that we have to incentivize large water customers. And I, I was wondering, is it a large Coca-Cola facility that was recently built in?
South Windsor.
South Windsor. And I believe that's in the area of town that would be served, that would, we would serve. Are they, are they, I don't even know what they're doing, I haven't been there, I'm no longer.
It's a warehouse.
The warehouse.
Yeah, it's a distribution.
They're not doing any bottling here, so not using.
Correct, but they have increased their consumption in East Hartford significantly over the last couple of years.
And are they possibly going to hit that, hit the, the numbers to, in order to?
I want to say, Chris, they were in the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, seventy-five thousand gallons a day range, and they went up. I, I don't know exactly where they are.
Yeah, they have one more line, I think they went up about sixty thousand gallons. So that would still leave them far below the, the point where they would have the incentives? Okay, thank you.
That's in the East Hartford plant.
Correct, yeah.
Buddy?
So I'd like to, and Scott, forgive me for asking a question at this point, but, but it's something that I've asked you before, so I think I know what the answer is, but the, the South Windsor, Gary brings up an interesting point. So, South Windsor's basically across the street from my house, and I, I know I've said this before, I can certainly hit a, like a lob wedge from my front yard, deep into South Windsor.
You're a long hitter, though, buddy.
It's only fifty feet across the street, so. Well, I used to be able to hit him that far, I can't hit him that far now. But the, the point being, you know, the guy, when I come home from wherever I am, the guy in the South Windsor side of the street has his irrigation system on, twice a day in the summertime, he's running. And, you know, I don't turn mine on anymore, not after last year, not after I had a water bill in July of like a hundred and eighty dollars for one month for watering my lawn. So, you know, but the point is, and Scott, you've told me this before, there's no clean water charge in South Windsor. So the price to a South Windsor water customer is basically the cost per CCF, that's it, and the service charge is the same as mine, so it doesn't really matter, it balances out. So he's watering his lawn for four dollars and five cents a CCF, and I'm watering for my, mine for something close to eight dollars, you know? And behind this guy, not too far behind him, is a Connecticut Water Company customer who's paying eight dollars a CCF on the other side of, for just water, not a clean water project. So there's so, there's such inequity in, in, in all of this, but the fact remains that the guy in the middle there with the MDC water in South Windsor and no clean water charge uses more water and spends more money on water than I do on actual water. So just confirm that. The non-member towns have a tendency to use more water per customer because they're paying less, and that's the whole point of making the, the rate as low as possible to sell more water. We're still only selling forty-seven million gallons of water a day, with our safe yield up around sixty-eight million gallons of water today. Scott talked about earlier, this week at, at our Board of Finance meeting, how with the number of employees has reached kind of a sweet spot. We really can't do with any less than employees, and I, and I hope that, you know, we don't spend a lot of time talking, you know, trying to make the number any, any smaller than it already is. But we sort of hit a sweet spot, but let's, let's call it four hundred employees, just for the sake, I have it a number. We can produce forty-seven million gallons of water a day with four hundred employees and X amount of chemicals for the water. We can produce sixty-five million gallons of water a day with four hundred employees and X plus amount of chemicals. That's the difference, that we have a system that's been built to deliver much more than we do, and if we hit the sweet spot with revenue, it would be fine, but, you know, if we sold sixty-five million gallons of water a day at four dollars and five cents a CCF, the, the revenues would be incredible. And, you know, the, the point is, we don't need any more employees essentially, we don't need any more employees to do that. I, I just like, Scott, just, am I way off base?
No, no, you're not, Commissioner, and we, we've say that a million gallons of water a day is about a million and a half dollars of revenue a year. So the challenge that we have with the issues that we raise, that are raised with Niagara is, and we've already done this, we've created a rate, we removed a rate, we create a rate, remove a rate. If you ever want to recruit someone to come to Connecticut because of our water, because of our infrastructure, whether it's, whether it's the highway infrastructure, if we keep changing that rate, you're going to scare off any potential people from coming here because they're going to feel that at any, at any given point, at any given year, you're just going to remove the rate. So I understand the, the question and the concern, but we've got to have some continuity with our rate structures so that we can recruit other businesses to come here.
Thank you. Commissioner Patel.
We cannot charge more to non-members. And you are talking about those who sprinkle the water, if you are sprinkling water and you want it cheaper, that's conflict of interest. We can't lower that rate for all those people who use water to sprinkle their water. I'm one of those, too. But that's a given, and we don't have any flexibility about it. So I keep talking about same subject over and over again.
I, I, I don't think I was talking about getting a lower rate for irrigating, I was just showing the comparison between.
The hose.
Mine costs eight dollars and the other guy costs four dollars, so, you know.
Further questions?
Give them a kickback.
You know where I can buy a hose, Ray?
I got extra hoses.
You need a longer one, though, if you're, as far as you hit a golf ball.
Further questions? If not, the motion to adjourn is in order? It's removed, without exception, we stand adjourn.